Welcome to the Coastside Fire Protection District Board of Directors Regular Board Meeting. Roll call please, Jean.
Yes, good afternoon, President Burke.
Here.
Director Cockrell.
Here.
Director Hannah.
Here.
Director McKinney.
Here.
Director Cheryl. Thank you.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And we are proud of the board that has one nation under our umbrella, individual and justice. Do we have any member of the public who would like to make any comments or requests at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And let me note that Director McKinney has asked to be recused from voting on the consent calendar. But with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved, so moved. Okay, second, moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero one.
Moving on to new business, item A, review and discuss take action to extend for the years two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five. The recent agreement for the Coastside Fire Protection District provides presence and services at no cost to the Coastside Dream Machines annual charitable event. As my name after it. And very brief background, when if you recall that Chad Hooker was here requesting our support a month ago, for some reason, I was under the call that there was some reason we couldn't go more than one year and that I was incorrect. And he requested that we actually have the agreement for three years. We've approved one and therefore to comply with this request that we can do. I'll make a motion that we extend that agreement for the year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah. Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item B, review, discuss and take action to vote for Coastside Fire Protection District's choice to fill the vacant seat on the locally at the LACCO Board of Directors. And let me just, well, let me just explain where this is. There is an opening on the LACCO Board. And I have received one request for a person who would like to fill that position. And I have had no other request. I believe the material that we would follow back to LACCO, assuming we vote, would be followed back to LACCO indicating our choice. The person I have received the request to be to fill that seat is Virginia Chang currently. And she wrote a letter to me, for the board, that she would like our nomination for her to be a member of the LACCO Board. I would just make a note, I know Virginia Chang is on the, I have a district board. She's also on, on Blackfire, has been very active, very successful in other things. I think she'd be a great person on LACCO and would like to nominate her. You wait a second.
Second.
Move to second, discussion.
Who, is it someone from this board in the past that's been?
I didn't hear that.
Yeah. Who's been on the board previous to this moment in time? It's on AMR or?
No. I, 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 on purposes, I believe the, the person who was on the board, the gentleman who was on the point of terror, what district who passed away. His name I can't think of at the moment. So that calls, that was, so, Rick Lowman, thank you. Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to new business, item C, review and approve resolution number two thousand twenty-three oh seven, authorizing participation in and amended. Restated during exercise of power of agreement of the Fire Risk Management Services Joint Power Authority Chief Call.
Thank you. The district is a member, a JPA member, joint powers agreement member of FASIS, which is the fire agency self-insurance system. They are joining the agreement with the FBA C EBA to merge the two programs. Since the merger of a JPA requires authorization from the, from the JPA members, of which we have one. So this resolution is essentially authorizing the participation of FASIS to move forward with FBA.
I'll just, first of all, we have a motion to approve this and we'll discuss. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded. Discussion, I, I, my first question is, being through the material, from our perspective, Coastside, nothing changing. That's kind of bottom line. It, it, I can't recall from a financial kind of thing or any kind of operations when you did it frankly, it hasn't happened. I can't remember an incident or a problem or excessive damage that's been on the back end and worked well. Any other question? Okay. Roll call please, Jean, to, what is it? To resolution two thousand twenty-three oh seven. Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke. Motion passes five zero.
Item D, we debate and chief calls.
Thanks, President Burke. This is authorizing us to advertise for contractors for the weed abatement process. For those who fail to clear the weed, this is the contractor you will use at the district's expense. And then put that in, heard feedback, the property owner on the article.
Do I have a motion to allow the chief to advertise for a weed abatement contractor?
So moved.
Moved, second. Moved to second. Moved to second, that we advertise for weed abatement contractor. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item E, review and discuss approved resolution two thousand twenty-three oh eight, approving the terms of the updated lease agreement with American Medical Response. West, West, cause on five, chief call.
Thank you. This is the continuation of the lease that AMR currently has or met at four forty here. This is an annual, sorry, a monthly rent of three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. The lease moving forward increased that by two point five percent for you.
As well, we have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
I'm very grateful to Chief Call, Senator Michelle Ortiz, who kindly went through the budgeting process with me. And through that, I came to understand that we really have nothing to do with the, with the ambulance lease that we pay for them. You know, they say that's for the lease, but that we don't structure that contract that is through the county supervisors. I just want to put out there that I do hear from citizens that they would like to have more than one ambulance on the coast side. I know that when there is a, a real issue or when one ambulance is occupied in another place. But sometimes egress is difficult here on the coast side. So in the future, perhaps we could consider whatever the steps are to have even one. Although I understand this is, this contract today is totally separate.
Certainly, the, yes, the only addition I'd say to that is the, the, the JPA, correct me if I'm wrong, is the, the Jane Hollywood part that we are a member of. Is the one that sets the contract with the ambulance service. It isn't directly the, the board supervisors. It's us, is that correct?
There's. Yeah, the way it works is when the, the board of supervisors puts out their requests for proposals for nine one one transport ambulances. Part of the requirement in there is that they will pay a fire first responder amount to each fire engine that has a paramedic on it.
Yes.
And that's a part of the contract. The actual approval of the nine one one transport contract does fall to the board supervisors. Okay, for transporting.
But to answer the question I've heard you speak to about a second ambulance, would be JPA? JPA?
I'm sorry, you're saying, who would you speak to?
Right, which authority?
Yes, the board of, the county of San Mateo holds the contract for nine one one transport ambulances in that area. So that is under the board supervisors.
All right. So to pursue a second ambulance, where the one go?
Where the supervisors. The, the question, where do we go? Yeah. Well, I, I guess, you know, I, I would, I'd like to see a little bit more data as to, you know, how many, I'm sure that the ambulance service could provide us how many calls we get some data. I don't know, some extended information that might be helpful. For example, it's kind of interesting because I was thinking the other day, I have not heard anybody of any, had any complaints of somebody waiting or something like that. Maybe they have, I just haven't heard it. But to answer your question, I would just ask the chief of the last, the ambulance services to provide us any kind of data or if they have it in their waiting period. I know there's backfill, people, ambulance has come from over the hill and backfill and all that. But perhaps if we go a step further, ask for the data and then see what, what position we would, we would take.
And during heavy call volume, they will, during heavy call volume, they'll send an extra ambulance over. And even last week, when we had the treaty shutdown ninety-two, I called dispatch and said, hey, you should probably send a second ambulance because we're, we're limited on our access right now. And the supervisor sent us a second ambulance on that too. Those, us being, you know, aware of what's going on helps.
Right.
But I see what you're saying too, to have one all the time would obviously be great for the community if it's possible.
I'll just make a recommendation here to invite the EMS director, Travis Kussman, with AMR. I'll invite them to present at the board about EMS response to land goes, okay?
That would be terrific. Because the discussion has been around in other communities where there's one ambulance for thirty thousand, that's more or less a standard. But here we have this top graphical issue of where fifty square miles spread out from, you know, Montero, I just need this creek. And it's that distance, which is about twenty-two, twenty-seven miles in there, that sometimes can make a difference in addition to the challenges of mudslides and tree falls and bridge builds.
Have they, have they mentioned, in terms of, and brought your attention?
People, when they become, as part of their training, they become aware that there are three engine helpings and one ambulance on the coast. And a Chinese chief on duty at any point in time, and they find that concerning.
I see. The only relationship we have with them is the fact they rent space from Mr. Hoothe engine. Aside from that, it's, it might not, far as work is concerned, it may as well not exist. They couldn't be renting space up the street, they're not, they're renting it here.
I think the tricky part is that we are so short on healthcare facilities here on the coast side.
True.
That people who need immediate help call the fire department and the fire department calls the ambulance if they need to. So that's the issue.
So there's.
It's unique conditions on the coast side.
There's X amount of ambulances in San Mateo County. Each district has a lot of, you know, area. So when our, this box goes on a call, they immediately bump one up.
I understand that, I do understand, thank you, that that's how it works. I just, I am, the, what I, the feedback that I hear is that we have some unique geographical issues here. And also are not a lot of urgent cares or hospitals or places to go. And this is something that people feel would be useful on the coast side.
And a lot of times the Montero community gets the ambulance out of the Pacific, I don't want to get this.
Right.
Typically, getting that one is a little bit cold.
President Burke, we do have one person.
I can see it.
I think it's Sid.
Sid, did you have your comment?
Hi, everybody, kind of a question comment. I know we have events on the coast side from time to time that bring a lot of out of the area visitors to like the upcoming Dream Machines or Pumpkin Festival. And then there was the mass shooting, which obviously probably required more than one ambulance. Do they pre-plan for events like that? Or, well, obviously not the mass shooting, but the regular festivals and stuff. Do they try to schedule one to be over here a little closer during those kind of things when there's going to be heavy traffic as well? Or do we just wait and see if there's an incident and then call for the backup ambulance?
I can answer that, Sid. Captain Sturmsen here from the Fire Marshal's Office. When, when they meet with, let's say, the Pumpkin Festival or Dream Machines, there's usually a requirement for a medical standby, which they have to provide the pain for the extra ambulance. As far as the shootings concerned, and Chief Solwood there, the, the ambulances that got dedicated to that mass shooting caused such a local level in the county that they actually brought mutually ambulance attendants in from Santa Fe right now.
Great, good to know. So I mean, I, I think we have pretty good luck here with our ambulances, so from what I see. But I did anticipate, maybe there was times when you needed to have an extra one, but it looks like you're covered. Thank you so much for the answer.
You're welcome, thank you. Let, let me hopefully not confuse the issue anymore. But what we're, board is being asked to do on here is the housing of this ambulance here. Which is the information we have here, that's what we're doing on. There is, AMR also provides us funding, a portion of the funding that they collect in our district is part of our revenue stream. This has nothing to do with the revenue stream, this is just the contract we have with AMR. Which actually is, this contract began just a few years ago. And they used to use a pack out in the driveway, but now we're allowing them to have access to the inside of the houses. Further questions, but we'll get some additional data and then decide. By the way, we, we did have at one time a second ambulance and the board voted to discontinue it. And that's another story and I won't get into it now, but it will come up when we get some of that additional information. I don't believe that requires the, we have a, yeah, we do need to have a vote. Do we have a vote on the resolution of the two twenty-three draft? Oh wait, I think we have a motion and a second. Yes. Roll call please, Jean.
Director Cockrell.
Yes.
Director Hannah.
Yes.
Director McKinney.
Yes.
Director Cheryl. President Burke.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, review and discuss ordinance, you know, twenty oh three in August, the Coastside Fire Protection District setting compensation for members of the Coastside Fire Protection District governing board. Patrick.
Thank you, President Burke. In, in some of my research and looking into this issue, I noticed that the examples used on the current ordinance looked at them apart, also San Valley, somewhere in the bottom fire districts. And I, I noticed that each one of those districts allows the board to be content for meetings per month. And I noticed that we are at two. And I know some individuals on this board might attend more than two meetings in a month, I just didn't know. That was something that we would consider looking at increasing from two to four, as similar to other districts in our area.
Look, discussion, you know, yeah. I guess the, the one thing that I don't, I wasn't able to see in the packet information in my package is that, and Jean said, you might remind me. We, we, there is a limit as to the, the total dollar amount that board members can be compensated in one month. Is that correct?
Yes, there's, there's two issues whenever you want to talk about making any particular changes to your ordinance. The first is looking at the number of meetings that you could be compensated for and the rate of compensation. So the last time you adjusted your compensation was in two thousand twenty, and you are allowed to adjust that on a yearly basis by five percent. So that would be one question to ask is whether or not you want to, want to adjust that compensation. The second goes to the issue that Director Hannah has just raised, which is that you can, under state law, be compensated for attending up to, actually up to six meetings a month. But if you are compensated for any more than four meetings a month, you have to make some very specific findings as to why meetings five and six are absolutely essential for the district to operate. And that is, my assumption is that is why you see many other districts limiting the number of meetings that are compensable to four each month. And right now, your ordinance has you set at a rate which you established in two thousand twenty and allows you to be compensated for only two meetings per month.
Jean? Please go ahead.
Jean, if I may ask, is there a, so if we were to change it to four, which is well within the, the reign of the maximums six, but under the, you said, further issue, I could have to describe why you need more than four. Is there a rate per month, is there a dollar amount per month that's a maximum as well, is there another factor there?
Yes, there is. You can raise your rates by five percent each year. So right now, you're at one sixty-seven fifty. If you wanted to make one jump, which you could have done in two thousand twenty-one, you could raise the rate to one seventy-five eighty-six. I know these sound like strange amounts, but they're set by, by the calculation under state law. You could, would also be able to take the adjustment which you did not take in June of twenty-two, which would raise the rate to one eighty-four sixty-seven. You could take that action right now. If you wait until June, you would be entitled to consider whether or not you wanted to take another yearly increase, which would be the increase that you would be allowed in June of two thousand twenty-three, which would then move your, your compensation rate per meeting to one ninety-three ninety. I will say historically, the board has not adjusted each and every year, but you are entitled to do that. And those would be the rates that you could move from, if you wanted to move it up above the currently established one sixty-seven.
Thank you, Jean.
Just another point of clarification, Jean. I understand that two meetings happen on the same day, for example, today, the finance committee and then this board meeting. That that can only count as one meeting, is that correct?
Yes, the board had established that that would be counted as one meeting. So one day of however many meetings, the board determined that that would be counted for one meeting.
Thank you.
And I should say, may I add just one more thing? There are, you, you may determine that you want to compensate for board meetings. Under state law, you could also compensate for advisory committee meetings. You could also compensate for attendance at conferences and educational activities. Again, under that limit of no more than six per month, but anything above four requires special findings. I know this is a lot of information. I'm happy to put this all in a written staff report for you to consider further if you'd like. But that's pretty much a quick primer on what state law provides for.
Jean, is, is there any special notation regarding attendance at Zoom meetings?
No, Zoom meetings are considered to be meetings, but you know, now under state laws, it's changed since March first. You have very limited opportunities as an elected board to attend by way of Zoom. You can teleconference as you've always been able to do, or if you have an emergency or a just cause. Those are, you can, you can have four exceptions a year under specific circumstances, which would allow you to attend by Zoom.
If a board member were to attend the required ethics training via Zoom, it would be covered?
Yes, it would be.
Well, more discussion, here's my couple of just comments on the thing. One is the, that, this piece of paper that has our policy on it, if you look at it closely, it has blood all over. I mean, this was a knockdown brag, they tried to figure this thing out, who would, who would attend and all that type of thing. And, and, and compromise in many areas and so forth. The, the number of meetings, given the limit we have on dollars and cents, unless we were to go through the steps that were outlined here previously, we could simply take the total amount of money that we were authorized and divide it by four. And, but the pay to the, the individual could be less if it's reduced by, by, divided by a quarter of the twenty-five percent as opposed to fifty percent. So it's, it's possible that, you know, we may be doing the, reducing the possibility of earnings if you did it. But let me, let me get to the bottom line. I'm not opposed to this. As they said, at some point in time, we had a real pool of people telling us that you weren't worth a nickel. So it was, it was, but, but here's the, I, I would, I'll make the suggestion that, that we ask staff for some background information on this, that we plan for it and take action on it as part of the new budget, which will be for this board in June, as to what we want to do. And update our policy if the board chooses to do it as part of their whole, all financial budgeting process. I don't think that, you know, we, we would go from, what is it now, one sixty-seven to one ninety-three? So I'm not sure that, you know, that's a huge item, but I just think have a little bit of time to take a look at the fact, the background. Take a look at what's available to us and whether or not there's any advantage to us. And by saying advantage, I don't think we're, we're not about to build a system. I don't think we're here because we're trying to get more money for this, you know, what's the easiest and the way to do, the way to do it. So that's my suggestion.
No, thank you, President Burke. I think my looking into it had mostly to do with the, the days involved.
So what?
The, the multiple days involved, whether it's with the committee, main board meeting or educational, like you mentioned and Jean mentioned. If you're going to have the ability to compensate an individual for that day, looking at, again, other examples around us. Can I clarify, Jean, a question, I, I think I asked it, I think you answered it, but President Burke mentioned dividing, if you divide by four, four meetings per month. So is there a cap per month that's a dollar amount? Or is the cap just to do with how much you can increase each amount per year?
So the cap is the amount you can increase each year. So you, if you increase by five percent, the figures I gave you are the rates at which you could move between. You could go to one seventy-five, you could go to one eighty-four. If you wait until June, you could go actually to one ninety-three, and that would be per meeting. And then the question becomes, how many meetings would you want to be compensated at that rate? Would you want to be compensated for two, which is your current practice? Or would you want to move that someplace between two and six?
So there is no, President Burke, like you mentioned, if we go up to four, it could actually reduce. So if you went up to four, it'd be four times currently one hundred and sixty.
Well, yeah, this is why we waited, Jean, I think, because you're, you're right. If you divide it, as I think of it, we, the national will say we increase it to one ninety-three, is what you would be able to do. And if we say that our policy says for four meetings a month, you get one ninety-three, but you only attend two meetings. Okay, you, you, you gave, you gave less than you are today as a two times one ninety-three. No.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, I think that, that's okay. Oh, I, I missed, I misunderstood that, okay. All right, well, that's a good point, yeah.
And again, looking at other districts in our area, four seems to be a common number and attending, whether it's training or other meetings or committee meetings. Does meaning make sense to be on par with others around us?
Then I would ask the staff to bring us back a recommendation, perhaps some additional information would be helpful that we could have as part of our June budgeting meeting.
President Burke, President Burke, I, I will then prepare an informational report for you because in order to adjust either the number of meetings or the rates, you would need to do that by way of ordinance, which takes two readings, which would get you to June anyway. So I'll prepare an informational report for you for next month, which will lay out all of your options. And from that, then we will, if you want to make any changes, we can then draft that ordinance so that it would take effect in July after your budget is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. All right, board of directors, support, finance committee. We did have a, an excellent meeting earlier this afternoon with regarding our files account for healthcare for our previous employee staff. The document is a public document, where we stand today, how we, what we're invested in, et cetera. And it obviously is available if they'd like to watch it on the website. And it obviously is available if they'd like to watch it on the, uh, website. In far as the, uh, budget itself, a spreadsheet for the month of February, year-to-date, and like the February is in our packet. It's a public document. I would just say that looking at it, there is nothing that is, jumps out at you. The, uh, our revenue year-to-date is on seventy-one percent after through February. Our expenses are thirty-three percent, uh, through February. But again, that's primarily because of the billing that we get from CalFire is behind, but, uh, but, so that is not a realistic It's probably closer to the two thirds, sixty-six percent than actually. Uh, we have, as you noted here, that we had some ten million dollars in, in, invested with the Santa Fe County, including two million dollars of a rainy day reserve. We have some fifteen million in various accounts in late, uh, including eleven million dollars towards the new uh, project for, uh, and the, the hers, uh, for, uh, retirement for our previous employees that have been paid for for the year, that was one point four millions, so that is behind us. You don't see that on the, on here, every month. And as the class balance for a healthcare self-sustaining account, the balance of that currently stands at three point six million dollars. Well, I, I would, I think I would say that it's a solid financial statement, but I don't see anything that jumps over it. Any questions or comments? Moving on to volunteer committee, Director Cartholme. While I attended the volunteer meeting, uh, did you want to comment?
Oh, please.
And I'm just not talking about stuff involving the five oh one C three, that doesn't affect the board, that's the central organization. So, the only thing they discussed was the, they're coming up with ID cards. Um, and then the train, the training, Target Solutions is doing the training. And they have, uh, just a brief discussion, the academy, there's fourteen, uh, volunteers at the academy right now. There's a discussion, some more training with the operators. They apparently have these courses and they're actually numbered one A and one B, and the volunteers were offered the opportunity to get this driver training, which would be held at the Spring Valley Fire Department, in which case, uh, the district would provide the engine that the volunteers would use for this training. So, next the, uh, that's what was discussed the last one.
Did they have more people to sign up to do that training? Isn't that the training that you mentioned? Yes. He seems to be in demand.
No, the one A and one B operator, so. But, and if I may all follow up as well, um, this is obviously an important class. I think it's being done by CSFA. And, and segue with CSFA, CSFA. Uh, I met with Marty Creo, who's one of our directors, and interestingly enough, kind of tying back to also our new paramedic program that we're currently doing with the volunteers. They have a new five oh one C three that's being started. So, I don't know the dates on this yet. It's called CFRST or T-Burst. Um, that will have the potential and is specifically designed to get funding to launch your departments for paramedic training or other kinds of training. So, this may be something to keep an eye on, um, for future source to help offset the cost of, for example, the paramedic training that we all voted on for the two individuals that will be attending, starting this month, actually next week. Um, definitely worth looking into. Don't know if it'll be something that will affect this first time doing it, those two individuals financially. But if you carry it on in the future, it seemed like there was, um, the board didn't seem interested in doing that in the future. There might be funding out there that we could actually be to help offset the cost of this. Who would be, who's forming, who potentially will form the five oh one C three? California State Fire Fighter Association.
California, CSFA.
Oh, okay. So, the California State Fire Fighter Association, all of the volunteers members of, even if they're not a paid staff member, they don't belong to another outside union or group. Um, so, CSFA, um, encompasses volunteers. I don't know if it's primarily only volunteer. I'm not sure about that, but they do encompass all volunteers. And they are now creating a situation where they have other funding availabilities, but their five oh one C three, of course, makes a tax deductible to us, who donate. So, they're looking into finding ways to help volunteer organizations, um, the costs for training, et cetera. So, I'll look into that in the future. Um, obviously, our volunteers last week, days, myself included, um, have spent a lot of time with the storms as well and good, good opportunities to, uh, assist and help our A-SAP, as well as, of course, the community to get out there and do some good work. So, we've been busy. The storms seem to keep, keep coming. Um, and then I wanted to ask, or just put it out there, I think in the past, in regards to Dream Machines that's coming up, first time this year since, uh, it stopped after COVID. I think the volunteers quite often staffed an engine during that. I don't know if this is an operational thing, that's, that's fine. But, um, I'm sure there'll be interest in that and discussion about how to do it, but, yeah, it's a good. We have a very, very good group, and I just want to make sure that in the future we do, we do enough, um, to, uh, to highlight our launcher organization in the Bay Area. I think it's actually quite a unique thing. And we should definitely spend more time, you know, a little more, but definitely a two.
I'd just like to add real quickly, over the last few months, the volunteers have been very helpful to, to the whole community, and they've helped us out a lot with staff, staffing up the DOC here and running extra calls and helping the pay staff attend the medical aid type call with our ALSI and then standing by and cutting up trees for us and steward standby on roadways that are blocked and sitting on power lines. I mean, they, they've been very helpful. We appreciate it. Everything you've done for us.
Thank you for the comment. You've done a great job. Keep it up.
Lots of late nights, lots of key insights.
Moving on, land construction, Peter Ford, Director McKinney, Director Carroll.
Let me, I'll let you have it in just a second. So, Monday, there was a site survey of the forty-four property parcel, and then today with the asthma.
Hazard assessment.
Yes. Thank you.
I caught him walking, so he walked in on it.
Hey, get out of there! Uh, so.
So, uh, it says the project kickoff meeting was completed on three seventeen. We would love to be a part of those meetings. We mentioned last time that we would very much like to be invited to observe, nothing more, uh, to get this project started, committed to it, we want to we want to do whatever we plan to be helpful to it. And I, we have missed the project kickoff meeting. It happened on the seventeenth, but we hope to be there in the coming future. Uh, and then the other thing is, we were talking about with Jean, at what point is it appropriate if we want to pre-qualify our contractors or construction teams, um, should we begin that process? And Jean came back to us very promptly with a, a, an excellent thought that we should do that once there is a comprehensive design package in place. And of course, as everyone knows, there's a lot of interim packages. So, my question is, at what, what stage of this schedule would we then say, now it is time to go pre-qualify our contractors?
Yeah, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're about a year away from that.
I think that's correct. We need to get through the design phase and the environmental review, uh, and the permitting, uh, from the county. And at that point, you will actually have a project, uh, that you will be able to adequately describe when you send out a bid package. Um, and that's the point at which we want to pre-qualify contractors.
All right. So, that's, so we're looking really at the beginning, uh, first couple of months of next year. That's what this looks like. It says, okay.
If, if I read this thing correctly, it, it says that the construction, uh, contract execution is the seven five two thousand twenty-four is what the plan is. Correct.
Right. That's, and by that stage, we should already have our pre-qualified set of contractors, is that correct? I think you have to do that before you.
Yeah.
So, uh, this idea of pre-qualifying was brought up by a number of different people who were experts who were involved in this process, and it really sounds like a great idea to be sure that all the things that we've learned in this process of forty-one and everything else that we can bring into bear by writing a pre-qualification are to be that, what we need.
I, I would, uh, you know, certainly I'm not anywhere near qualified to go through all of them. Though I was impressed by the, I looked at the date when the first shovel comes in on the second page. But, you know, it is, uh, as I would anticipate going on, and just from looking at the construction that we had from out here when we were going through the power as well as fighting ones, there's a huge amount of interaction that's going to take place between the chief and various subcontractors to work, that we should not be involved in. And when I look upon that as your basic responsibility to take care of that. Now, clearly, the, the thing to do is when do you bring various items back to us to get involved, either the committee or maybe the whole board, to make some decisions on a variety of things of doing it. But the, even though this takes a page and a half, the actual meetings that are going to go on, uh, dozens of meetings, telephones and everything else, and I would look to you to have you, the staff, the chair, and all that type of thing, uh, to have the, uh, control of that and have the wisdom as to when it comes back to the committee or to us to, to get involved with it. Uh, my, my input, okay? I would, uh, one more time, I did, I, I don't know what I was expecting, but I wasn't expecting this kind of detail so fast from after your decision to support these folks.
So, we've seen, we've had, I think I've been for a while. And I, I very much think that a better project comes when leadership is active in the project. I think that one of the key, key places where the architectural team, the design team, and then the construction team and, and the supervision team, it's so critical that both of those teams are top of the mark. And I just feel like we have chosen the optimal design team. And that now we need to prepare for partnership with an outstanding construction team so that we don't run into some of the situations we may have encountered before.
Yeah, I think.
Again, I, for act it not to interfere, but, but for my main objective.
We have a little roster. Pay for those awards.
Okay, if, if I may, I just have a quick, one here is like a quick answer. I don't know. I know this is also going to be a year out. This isn't obtained until that construction starts, but, um, was this in around how forty-four will operate during construction? And then who's going to help us figure that out? Is that part of our, this plan?
Yeah, so that is, um, something we're already playing for. Uh, so, just for clarification, Gary's leading, Gary is the representative. He is leading, we've got a construction background, he's, he's our division chief of operations here, and having this be have an operational assignment, he's, he's leading the, the project, so I'm happy to hand it off to him, but I think for process purposes, making sure that PBK is, is in line with Gary and hand in hand with the process. Um, my, my only concern is PBK, putting PBK in an uncomfortable situation if, if there is a a board member contradicting or overriding Gary in any sort of meeting where, where we're trying to get the project. That's just my concern is, I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters with PBK and not have Gary.
Chief Cox, I'm sorry to just jump in, but if I could offer something which has proven to be successful on a lot of projects that our office has staffed for many of our clients, and I think we did this through part of, uh, the last build, which would be to place on, uh, each regular agenda, just an update that could be given by staff to the entire board as to what's happened, uh, since the last meeting. Uh, and that way, the board can ask any questions it wants, to give us any input it wants. Uh, and that seemed to be the most efficient way, and I know from the elected officials, uh, the projects that I've staffed, they all felt very comfortable with that because they, they felt like they were on top of what was occurring each month. Uh, and they felt they had an opportunity to offer their input, uh, in a public meeting. So, that might be a way that we could approach this.
Good suggestion. Let's start it on the next month's agenda.
And I also think the advantage of the board of having people here who have experience doing this, that there would be no benefit to, in any way, undermine Chief Solva's authority in the project. Or it would be unprofessional by creating some form of controversy in front of the team or confusing the line or order, time factor. That simply would not happen. It's a matter of bringing expertise to bear on behalf of the district that would benefit the entire team.
So, I think if we have, as I understand it, have some kind of a, a monthly status report, for lack of a better word, uh, would certainly identify if there are any kinds of bumps that we need to address and whether they're administrative, operational bumps that you take care of or that's risen to a level that the board makes a, a policy decision. But at least the suggestion of bringing it back on a monthly, uh, update, uh, provides that opportunity to handle any kind of uh, issue that might cause a problem for my community. This is going to be a long couple of years.
And I don't think we answered, uh, your question about the, about the temporary housing.
So, the second part of your question, um, we've looked to acquire land that we can rent. And I think we found some. We have a landowner that's willing to work with us. He's right there on the corner of California and Alphador, right on the station. It's a fairly good sized lot. Um, John Radel and I have reached out to him. We were going to discuss with him, uh, leasing options for the ground. And basically told him we'd be looking to put a modular there of some sort to get house, you know, three to four employees and probably put some crushed rock ground or something, park the party on, so it's not, it's not in the dirt, maybe even a temporary tent or shed of some sort to protect the engine from elements the best we can, and it sounds like that's a pretty viable option. And, um, we've seen to get some further discussions with him, see what he's looking at, and then bring it back to the board and see how long, what these we're looking at doing and how it's going to work with, with the person. But the preliminary discussions have started and it's looking positive for us, and I think it'd be great for the community because then we're keeping the agent and the staff literally right down the road and right in the community. And it's a temporary housing that we can, when it's done, we can pull it out. We can either purchase it by renting, whatever we need, whatever's feasible for the district. You know, we can look at those options, we'd get further in this.
Yeah, thank you. So, with this lot that's on the southwest corner of Alphador and California?
Oh, yes, 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 that's correct.
So, it's next to the cheap hotel.
Yeah, I think it's a fairly good sized lot too.
Yeah.
It has a fence around it right now.
Yes.
And it basically, the engine can probably pull in off Alphador, California and pull out and be a one-way suite right there, kind of, maybe. I'm not sure.
Except we couldn't make an arc.
Okay.
So, we were going to buy that house and make it a pull through.
Make it a pull through. I think without doing a full-size car station though, like a modular, double-wide, then we could probably facilitate it, but looks like it's a good option. Hopefully, the, the owner is willing to work with us and make something work, sounds like he is, so.
Good. Yeah, it sounds like. Used to be the volunteers.
We'll pay the order or rent while we're using it.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll just lease it, and from what I understand, the, the sewer and power and everything right there at the road shouldn't be too complicated to facilitate it, so.
Great.
Once we get that's way down the rip.
Yeah, I think it's something we'll need to lock down pretty quick. I think he originally wanted to sell that lot, and I think we're going to have to come to some sort of agreement with him so he doesn't sell it. And it's an option, stay available to us, because if they do sell it, we haven't had any luck finding anything else anywhere in the area, so. I think we might need to try to lock it down the best we can, as soon as we can.
Okay, good, good luck.
For energy, so that was the end of my question.
Anything else on that subject? Uh, vegetation management, Director Cartholme, Director Hannah. Well, Director Hannah's request, we had a meeting with Chief Cox, spent a rather lengthy time getting deep on the whole vegetation management program. I thought we've got a pretty much better briefing with, uh, the other we have. It seems to be still there, trying to be people there. Okay.
Yeah, so, as Steve just mentioned, uh, we're briefed, uh, as the, the new committee members for this. And, uh, the, the previous plan that was put in place, um, is still ongoing, and it's accomplished and was wide enough in its breadth to look at all the effects of our vegetation management program we have currently. And, um, with the chief's, you know, recommendation that things moving forward or moving forward in the direction they should be going, everything's being taken care of currently, there doesn't seem to be any new outstanding issues that we enjoy.
new outstanding issues that need to address. So right now it's carrying the ball forward. Thank you, Chief Cox.
We're good. Special District Association, San Mateo, you have to, I hope you have a chance to contact or be involved with them.
Patrick, thank you, President Berg. I have, uh, I attended the, it's the end of last month, the first few days of this month's leadership conference, uh, for first time attendees. Yeah. And um it was a wonderful experience from not just meeting other people in special districts. Um, quite a few fire districts were there, when that's the night, maybe not always the case. I would say it was a hundred and change, uh, people attending. The, from an educational standpoint, from myself personally, was was fantastic. I mean, not every single topic that was spoken of was relevant to our district. But um some of the ones that were, were very enlightening, obviously covers one or two of the boxes that I need to tick for my trainings as an elected official. Um, but it was very eye-opening. Um, I think that it brought home a lot of regardless of the kind of special district you are, it's just very good information on how to operate as an elected board. And I obviously won't reference the obvious part of being kind to each other and all that kind of stuff, because that is covered, of course, but you know, there's, there was a few things that I wrote down that I'll just share today. I mean, one of them is very simple, but it's, you know, be together but not the same. I think this board is a very effective board for a lot of reasons, but I think we are together and we're not the same hard hands. Now you have, there's always room for interesting ideas that we're not trying to be one unit, which is great. And then again, I'm just referencing the things that kind of popped in my head during this these sessions, um promoting dialogue, difference of opinions. I mean, they get into all kinds of topics and putting, and they don't always have to have a unanimous decision on it. So I think, I think often people feel not pressured, but it just, it's really promoting the individual, the official on the work to work together consistently and effectively. Doesn't always mean you have to think exactly the same way. Again, parts that I took out of it. I also, this is part of the special districts association, but I also attended the FDAC associations um annual conference. And that was actually about a week after um the first conference. And that also was, um, fascinating. Obviously, Fire District Association of California, so fire specific. Um, again, four days of an intense amount of information um brought things that directly would be useful for us, whether it's to Cal Fire or the Fire Marshal's Office or uh different things that will be happening in regards to legislative issues that help funding for fire districts and looking at ways to ERAP and how to counter or how to assist with other districts that do not benefit, um as we know, in this district and being in this county were considered to be in a better place from that perspective. But again, educating myself on these topics and learning from the individuals that were there. It was a phenomenal experience. I highly recommend it, um primarily fire chiefs, but I'd say it's an eighty-twenty split of four directors and fire chiefs. Um, had an opportunity to uh meet Director Tyler and spoke with him and Director of Cal Fire. So it's a really wonderful organization to be part of, especially for individual districts. So thank you very much for allowing me to educate myself and.
When, when you're approval.
She's kidding. Thank you.
Hi, glad you're able to do it.
Waiting when you were there for a chance. Did you ever talk to anybody from Amador County? Did we call?
Uh, FDAC, man?
Yeah.
From Amador, I I can recall Concha Costa. Yeah, they side, Amador, I don't remember specifically in Amador, though I have to tell you, it were four days and you need to talk to a lot of people, whether it's the coffee time or evening cocktail time, there's a lot of, a lot going on. Uh, but a lot of, a lot of local, local enough, you know, like I said, Concha Costa, San Mateo. Um, you get a little further up. There does seem to be more than roughly northern California organization. They have some influence, some members from around, around the state of the south.
And the only reason I mentioned Amador is they also have califiers, the contractor. And they came up with something that was now called the Amador Plan for the finances, which I found very intriguing.
Okay, moving on, ALSJP, uh, no report, emergency preparedness liaison report. Is Chief Cox great on?
Yep, I am on and uh the one thing I'll tell you about emergency preparedness is August fifth is what the county has picked for their event for the disaster preparedness day at the event center in San Mateo. Uh, so we'll be working on the, uh, what we're going to do with that one. Uh, gonna try to do a big focus on home hardening and defense for the firewise communities. And uh low cost readiness, because we have a lot of people saying that, you know, they can't afford to prepare for electrical outages and and we're going to just try to come up with options and and do those types of things for them. Uh, other things we got going on is a disaster, we're still in the disaster recovery mode from the December-January storms and uh the individual assistance closed on the sixteenth, the public assistance closes on Friday, the twenty-fourth. Um, the county did declare a emergency declaration for the the storms we just had yesterday. Uh, they don't know if they're going to apply for assistance. If they do, we'll be calling on the fire district if they know of any, you know, high value losses, because we have a seventy-two hour window to try to get the the cost value in for uh losses. And one thing we learned from last, last time was we had a lot of flooding, but unless it got up to the electrical outlets, they weren't really interested into it. And if a tree went into a house, unless it punctured the living quarters, they weren't interested at the uh uh trees falling, destroying the the fences, the driveway, all those type things are not uh covered under. It's uh it's the living structures that they take care of. Uh, and we've been just, uh, with these storms here, we've been monitoring power outages and road closures, so uh, that's been keeping us busy as well as the training that we offer at the EOC here in the Rock. Uh, we've, we've had several trainings going on and uh um the fire personnel are welcome to and to attend if they want any additional, you know, uh ICS training. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dave. Questions, comments? Thank you, Dave. Senator, Director Sherwood.
Thank you, thank you, President Burke. We are, the Coastside Search has thirty-five new certs thanks to you and hosting us here at the fire station. We appreciate the fact that we could do this comprehensive training here. Uh, we now have three hundred and ninety-four certs. Uh, we are the largest program in the peninsula. We are grateful for the um support of the Coastside Park Protection District. And we should probably come up with an MOU at some stage formalizing our agreement, since there is really is nothing here currently. We have something, the next event is going to be April twenty-second. It's uh called Shake and Bake. It's, we've been doing a lot of different things that are highly technical and specialized and we're going to go back to our roots and do advanced training in earthquakes and wildfire, simple, straightforward, Saturday morning.
What's a day on that?
Twenty-second. It's going to be instructed, the instructor is Cert Matt Linton, who is had twenty-five years with FEMA. His last assignments were primarily on the Team Five Response Team that went around the country to major assignments, major incidents. Um, and he's a very good instructor. He's a special, yeah, he is a subject matter expert who helps us with a number of different topics like like search and rescue. And again, these are working projects, so that's coming up your April twenty-second. It's our second in our five series advanced or training that comes in addition to the basic search. And.
Thank you. Moving on to turner support.
Nothing, thank you very much.
Good. Why am I?
Kevin. Uh, W Fire Marshal Tyler Sturm, I'm in place for Chief Griffin today. Um, not much to report, but we are staying very busy with our martial arts plans and everything. Uh, right now, we currently have the best, the best station abatement program underway. Uh, we have pressure from Bay Area Bay Area tree specialists, uh, doing the lots. It's been obviously delayed by some weather. Um, but he is ready to go and he'll probably start in the next day or two. Uh, we also sent out our re-abatement letters. So we're going to give the property owners till mid-May and then we'll start reevaluating the lots. And um just wanted to point out that our martial arts office has been helping out with all these storms as well, staffing DOC, uh stacking engines and just kind of running random calls throughout the district. So uh, we've been busy as well with that and that's about it.
Kevin, thank you. Questions, comments? Great.
Uh, Fire Chiefs report, Chief Cox. Thank you. I'll actually go out of work for, because the fire captain, the deputy fire marshal we hired, what, a year and a half ago, the second deputy fire marshal? Yeah. Position, we finally got the vehicle we ordered for them last week, so. Um, that's good news for their office. Uh, just a point of, point of note, the cost of a new vehicle for a staff member in the last year has gone up by twenty thousand dollars. So the the cost has just skyrocketed. We don't worry when we get involved in that. A few things just uh to start off, one is uh the individuals who responded to the Hafen Bay shooting were um acknowledged at the Hafen Bay City Council meeting a few weeks ago. Uh, all received certifications or certificates from the city along with the sheriff's office. Um, and AMR, that's a nice event. And see a lot of the folks who are actually on call out there being acknowledged. Uh, we have a meeting, when I say we have, in the San Mateo County Fire Chiefs Association and Public Safety Communications, we have a meeting next Monday, um in Redwood City to talk about um our CAD system, the applications we're using with CAD, our mobile data terminals, uh, everything related to that system in the moment. And then thirdly, on the management side, we just completed, I mean, left on the management side, we completed I think in total, we did thirteen all-hands meetings going um battalion by battalion, ship by ship, just sitting down with groups of eight to ten people. Hit every single person on duty, myself, Chief Tom Shaw and Chief Wilson, who's my counterpart, is here, please. Um, which is I gotta say, so far the highlight of my year, just to like get down and talk to the crews and hear their issues, discuss what's going on. Uh, takes a lot of time, but well worth investing. Uh, on the um operation side, that goes without saying, it's been busy, I think forty-one calls yesterday were processed through the DOC here, and Chief Ford was running that. Uh, we also had a cliff rescue slash ocean rescue a few weeks ago up, um, up in the uh Montero District Board. On the training side, the uh company officer series continues uh that, that those classes are a jack requirement class, which means uh when someone joins our organization, they're uh helping you uh jack requirements that they are required to learn certain skills when they first three years of being here. Uh, some of the uh supplemental classes such as company officer and part of that. The also Chief Silva has a active shooter, a combined active shooter training for supervisors scheduled for next week here on the coast. Uh, that's going to be law enforcement and then chief officers to talk about managing, actually practicing the management of um uh, match shooter events. I I force them to not be here. I'll be at the uh Rui Conference, but Chief Silva will be there with his gun venture. The uh, the apparatus side, obviously the two new Pierce engines are here. The ERB is being outfitted still. Uh, that's going to be the small um little side-by-side unit. And the engine forty, original engine forty is now done at the engine manufacturer, the engine replacement shop and at Owl, I don't need to count in public works, getting its final um uh pieces for a time. Uh, and with that, I can answer any questions.
So will the original engine forty become engine one forty?
Yeah, so the plan is in the original engine forty become one forty, we will send a circle, we'll send a surplus, the current engine one forty. The new engine forty-one will become engine forty-one. Old engine forty-one will become one forty-one. Surplus one forty-four. So probably in the next three months, we'll be coming to use surplus two engines.
Thank you.
Yep.
Comments, questions? Great. The year, when was the, when did we place the, those two new engines with a balance service? When did we first place that on?
That, those orders were placed in the spring of twenty twenty.
Correct. The uh, the, the, I would hope that you're happy in whatever is appropriate for publicity to the community. If there's some way to get some photographs, perhaps in the Hafen Bay review is something to the fact that what their money is, their citizens' money of being spent on would be welcome and good information to have.
Yep.
Yeah.
Maybe we could have Cynthia lead a ceremonial pushing and managing.
We would applaud you that whole time.
Thank you so much. You know, actually, the agency review today sent out a request for photographs from community service activities that are happening all across the coast side. So this might be a great place to to be with the margins.
Okay. Chief Silva, did you not? Anything else? Without objection, we adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.